All right, welcome everyone to our planning commission meeting. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna start with the pledge allegiance by Commissioner Galt and a prayer or moment of silence by Commissioner Stimson.
Please rise and join me in repeating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful that we could be here tonight as a planning commission and that we could be here to serve our community. Please bless our country, please bless the military, those that serve. Please watch over us as we spend our time here and help us to make the right choices for our community. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number three, action on the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting from two twenty six? Do we have any changes or corrections? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a move to approve the minutes by Commissioner. Sudden, my mind's going blank. I know. Reed, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Gahl. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Okay, moving on to agenda item number four. Wow, this could be, this is going quick. Public hearing to consider a request to rezone parcel zero eight one nine eight zero 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 five from A one to C two. Stephen, do you wanna give us a little recap or?
Yes, I can give a brief background on this application. So this is a property, it's one point one seven acres and it's located right off the intersection forty seven hundred west and four thousand south. So this is the northeast corner of that intersection. The applicant has requested a rezone from A one to C two. So a little bit of background on this, as you saw, as you likely saw in the report, is that a previous zoning map, the most recent one I could find that had this was in twenty twenty one zoning map showed this parcel as C, as a C two zone, but our current map shows this as A one. After review, after the applicant or the property owner's request, we found that the reason it was changed and reflected as A one on the current mapping was because there was no ordinance or any decision by the city's legislative body to change the zone from its original zoning of A one. And so the property owner has now asked to change that zoning to C two, which matches the general plan. General plan has this property labeled as a future commercial area, particularly a C two. Two and this to kind of highlight the major differences between an A one and C two zone. An A one zone is mostly intended for agricultural areas, agricultural use or larger lots, half acre particularly. Well, C two is a zoning, is a commercial zone that's aimed to provide a range of commercial uses that are kind of middle intensity of commercial uses. And is, and the code states that this type of zoning district is best located at the intersection of arterial streets. And so this applicant tagged the property actually lies onto arterial streets. And so staff has given it a positive recommendation subject to that the plan, that the application meets our general plan map and that the property is located off of arterial intersection, off arterial roadways. Any questions about it?
Any questions for Stephen before we proceed? Okay, before we go into public hearing, should we have the applicant come up and do an explanation or should we go into public hearing first? Usually we have the applicant come up, I think, to, yeah.
Yeah.
Did applicant wanna present what their plans are and be brave? There's a whole house here, so.
I'm just basically gonna restate what he just.
Yeah, and just state your name and address if you.
Okay. My name is Lisa Jones. We live in West Haven in the Fair Grove subdivision. Our family, along with Dennis and Susan Green, have owned the land on the northeast corner of four thousand south and forty seven hundred west since about nineteen eighty eight. In two thousand one, Rand and I started the development of the Fair Grove subdivision. We studied the city zoning maps and went through the process of rezoning some of our land. We were very familiar with the zoning maps in two thousand one, and at that time, all three of the four corners that we owned or co-owned at that corner were zoned C two. I have a West Haven city zoning map from two thousand fourteen, which is even more current than this one, but, and it shows all four corners as being zoned C two. I understand that Weber County and West Haven City are separate, but we have been paying property taxes based on the commercial rate on the ground that we own with Greens for years. We never had any indication or notification that the zoning of our ground had changed from what it had been for the last twenty five years. Last month, we had someone contact us because they are interested in buying our land for a commercial business. We were shocked when they told us that they had contacted West Haven City and that they had been told that our land was not zoned commercial. We never received any notice that the zoning of our land had changed and we believe an error has been made. The other three corners at four thousand south and forty seven hundred west are zoned C two, and we are requesting that the zoning of the land on the northeast corner be rezoned back to C two as it was on previous zoning maps.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Any chance you can get that overage of property tax back?
Well, I guess that's up to you if you.
We're not the county, sorry.
Yeah. All right, do you have any, I don't have any explanation. Sometimes if Amy's here, she might have an explanation of, I mean, sometimes the zoning maps.
I'm, I am here.
Online, yeah, Amy, do you have any, do you have any recollection or any context on the, did it change or was, I mean?
Well, so back in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, well, in more along the lines of twenty twenty two, and it was right after the whole thing that we figured out that there was a bunch of zoning that was that open space. You remember we had to rezone like about a hundred, you know, a little over a hundred parcels because they were zoned as open space and that zone specifically stated that you couldn't have any buildings and yet there were houses on like every single one of those lots. And in the middle of doing that, that's when Sherry Pippin, our last community development director, figured out that there was a bunch of different parcels in the city that may not be zoned correctly. And so she had gardener engineering go through and look at every single ordinance, rezone ordinance that has been passed since the city became a city. And if, and had them update the map based on that. And if you recall, we had another problem with like another parcel, Vicki Hall's parcel where she'd come in for a rezone. It actually had been passed, but because the ordinance, they hadn't actually passed an ordinance with it. That's when it, it, it didn't catch the attention of gardener engineering. And so that wasn't placed on the map, even though it had been zoned that. And so I'm assuming that with this particular one, same sort of thing, it, for whatever reason, when other things were being zoned around it, it did not, we had the legal description of this particular parcel, even though, you know, it may have showed it on the maps. We're, we've been trying to clean up our, our zoning map. So that would be the explanation as to why. My guess is anyway.
I hope that helps, but doesn't fix what's transpired prior, but hopefully things can be made right.
As long as we can get it fixed.
Yeah. So anything else, any questions for Lisa before we move into public hearing? All right, go ahead and have a seat.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to agenda item number four and to enter public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to enter public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we enter into public hearing.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Reyna and a second by Commissioner Stimson to enter public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we are now in public hearing. If anyone present either online or here in person would like to step up to the microphone or raise your hand online and just tell us your name and address and present us with your opinions. Be respectful and limit your comments to two minutes. Because it might get really busy and long. And then if you have questions, then we'll answer them after the hearing. So we'll write them all down if you have questions.
Okay.
Go ahead. State your name, please.
John Abel. I live at forty six twenty nine west, thirty eight fifty south. I think it's Joni Acres behind to the north of this property. I'm just curious. I understand it's, you know, commercial property and it seems like West Haven's growing faster than a lot of us like to see it. It's getting crowded out here, but just curious, with the Maverick that moved in over there on that adjacent corner, does West Haven, I briefly looked over the website, but does West Haven have like a dark skies ordinance? I'm just curious.
That after, but we'll have an answer for you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's important. So I.
I, I just, because my concern was is where I do live, you know, it used to be you could look out the back deck and it was dark at one point. And just went Maverick and I've got a garage that sits that blocks Maverick directly, so I don't see the lights directly, but it's still, it's this big glow in the sky at night, you know? And I just noticed that some of the homes that were right behind Maverick there, you can see their back porch like it's lit up like daylight. So with that, I was just concerned about as that corner grows, and I know it will, just that maybe we relook at that and see, you know, what kind of lighting is being used because I'm sure that Maverick probably, the, the lights that they use, they say that they're dark skies, whatever, compliant. But it's, it's funny, even though that they do shine down, they shine out quite a bit. And that was my only concern. I mean, I understand it's, it's gonna grow out there. I just hope it's not seven eleven or holiday oil again. Enough of those, but anyways, that was all my concern was. It's just, it's getting bright out there with, with all the development. So.
That's good.
But thank you for the time.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online, Robin? This was a really contested issue, obviously. All right, if there's no one else with comments, we'll have a motion to leave public hearing.
I'll make a motion to leave public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Simpson and a second by Commissioner Reed to leave public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, now we're out of public hearing and we can address the questions and we appreciate your comments. West Haven does have an ordinance, a lighting ordinance to avoid light pollution. And maybe Amy can weigh in too, but they have to comply, businesses and homeowners. And this actually came about, we updated it because homeowners are putting in sports courts that were providing light pollution to their neighbors, which, so we really feel like this is a really important issue. And West Haven is a dark sky destination, I guess. I don't know if destination or city.
Yeah.
So I don't know if Stephen or.
Yeah, I can maybe comment a little bit on that. So currently our code requires that all new commercial facilities have full cutoff lighting, which is where the lighting is within the fixture itself. And so it shines directly down. And our code requires that light, that there's, the light doesn't trespass onto other adjacent properties. And so when we have a site plan that comes in, that's one thing that we always look for. We require a lighting plan, make sure we have the light fixtures. And they also show us like a foot candle for the lighting around the property to try to mitigate some of those, some of those issues. There are a couple of different standards for gas station canopies that I could find if, if another minute, but generally they're the same way, that all the light has to be fully shielded and directed directly down. And then existing commercial properties that don't comply, under the code are given a special, are given so many years to come into compliance, so.
Okay, so the resident has a concern or they feel like it's maybe there is some light pollution or it's succeeding what is allowed? Would they just contact code enforcement?
Yeah, or they can reach out to my office and we'll have somebody go look at it.
A good rule of thumb with that is if you're standing like on an adjacent lot and you can see the actual light bulb, it's probably not in compliance. But if you're just seeing the ambient light being thrown down from the light, it's probably in compliance. So. It's, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah.
So the back of my house faces the south.
Yeah.
Now that some locations are, the house is dark, I can see the blinds on the, the opposite wall.
Yeah. And that could be an ambient light type thing, like obviously if you're in a dark room and the light's shining down, it's gonna light the room. But the, the lighting ordinance is written so that you're not directing light towards someone else's property. That doesn't mean that ambient light isn't gonna flow to that property, but you can't have a spotlight pointing towards. Yeah.
Small light, but if I look at it for, you know, a quarter mile away and I can still see the light, that's.
That's, I, that's gonna have to get into the technicalities of what. Yeah. Yeah, if it's projecting, that's where like actual the intent is to project outward, that's where the, the lighting ordinance comes into play.
Correct.
Yeah, and that, I know that charter school was built before the lighting ordinance came into effect. And if it, if it becomes an issue, the, the code enforcement's really good around here about getting a solution worked out with it, with it being, but yeah. That's kind of the rule of thumb. If you can see the light being projected, that's an issue. If, if it's being shown, you know, downward, but you're still getting the light, that's kind of where, can't really control that much of it, but.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, and, and, and like Stephen was saying, all those plans come through the planning commission and they actually have to provide engineering that actually shows the throw of the light to make sure that it's not done. And that building's new enough, that Maverick building's new enough that it came through and met the requirements according to the engineer, the city engineer, so.
Most of these are wannabe good neighbors. It's worth a walk over and ask them to turn those down at night. We've had some pretty good success with businesses that when you just let them know that, hey, those lights are really bright at night, that they would find a way to turn them down at night.
Yeah. It, it, it still might be worth an email or a phone call. I, I would suspect that they, like, like Commissioner Stimson said, they wanna be good neighbors, so.
All right. Any other comments, discussion? Do you have anything?
Do we know what's going in on the corner? Are you willing to say that or? You don't have to tell us, but if you, if you know, you can tell us.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's not a Chick-fil-A?
It's not a Chick-fil-A.
Not Trader Joe's, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're holding out for a Chick-fil-A.
Well, good for you guys. I think that's great that this is turning into something for you guys. It's that, that four thousand is, is kind of the, one of the last east-west corridors we're gonna have in the city to, to do any type of commercial development with the new, you know, future growth of the, what are they calling it? The West Weber corridor? That's eventually gonna go through there. So we need to really plan for the future as far as commercial goes and keeping it, you know, located on four thousand versus other parts of the city. And I think, I think what you guys have got there is something good, so. I just wanted to say, I've seen the maps that you've seen. I was really surprised that this showed up on the agenda because based on the maps I've seen, I was certain that it was already zoned commercial, so. Yeah. Well, and as a, as a little bit of a background, we, planning commission and the city council and the, everyone in the city is working on cleaning up the general map, the plant, the maps and the plan and all that stuff. So it's in the work, so, you know, a little bit of patience is, is great too, but it's being worked on.
And apologies for kind of putting you guys through more effort to get things zoned correctly. But it sounds like it'll be worth it in the end. So thank you for your patience and not being really angry with, with us. It preceded us, but
Yeah.
it's good if we can make things right, so. All right, any other comments or discussion? Before we go forward with a motion? And this will have to go to city council too as well, so.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the city council of the G and J Hollings LLC rezone from A one to C two parcel zero eight one nine eight zero 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 five, finding the application conforms with the general plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hepworth and a second by Commissioner Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. You're on to city council. Would it be next week, Stephen? So you'll just go to city council next week. It'll be on their agenda.
So it's on Wednesday, the meeting, I believe, will start at, I think it starts at.
I think it's at six.
Six. And so it should be same time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone for your attendance and for being civil. I miss the days when the sheriff had to be here. I'm just, you know, the good old days, right?
Yep.
All right, okay, moving along. We're gonna do agenda item number six, reports, action taken by the city council. Stephen, do you have that for us?
Yes. I don't have a whole lot to, to report on other than the general plan and kind of who we are at that.
I forgot to listen. I was gonna listen and I.
So last week I sent you out the presentation that I gave to the council. And actually, the version I sent you compared to the version, the version I sent them saved funny. And so all the slides are crooked. But then I figured it, I fixed it when I sent you. So you got a better version, actually. But the, so we went over the general plan and kind of the process. I won't go too much into some of the details because we talked a little bit about what is the general plan and why we're going through this at this moment. What I really wanted to kind of talk to the planning commission about is kind of my general recommendations that I won't talk to the council about and their feedback. And so essentially what it came down to is I felt like we needed a few elements done within the general plan itself. Namely, we want to get our land use element complete. We need to do a water element and we need a transportation element or master plan done. And I felt like those are important and urgent for us to complete. The one reason for the water element, this is a new requirement by state code. We have to have it approved before the end of the year in order to be in compliance. And really what that element requires is that you look at your overall water use in the city and how the land use affects how water is being used. And then general plan is supposed to make recommendations on how to reduce water usage based off of your proposed land use and other steps that you could do to mitigate excessive water use.
So I read through that and, and I looked at that very carefully and I think, in my opinion, I never saw, but, and I looking at that and I'm seeing that, that imparts a great responsibility on the city to do all these things in, in terms of trying to figure this stuff out. You know, in my estimation, that should be a requirement that should be levied on the developer or somebody coming in and putting in a subdivision. And that should be part of the requirements for that subdivision plan is that they should do whatever's required in terms of water usage and, you know, water saving measures, et cetera, and provide that in that subdivision application package.
Yeah, I, I think that is, I'm very accurate. I think one of the thing, well, one of the things that will likely come out is, and what other cities have found, is updating landscape ordinances. Our landscape ordinance actually is pretty good for as far as a water conservation tool. And so I don't actually imagine that there's gonna be a whole lot more that we'll do to our landscape ordinance, maybe other than clean up a few sections that we've had some confusion about over the last year. And then other things that they want us to look at is whether or not the land uses that we, if our, if we have enough water to support the land use and our future land use, our general plan map. A lot of areas within the state are seeing where they have a lot of development planned out and a lot of high water usage development potentially, but they don't have the resources to support that type of growth. And so the state really wants you, wants every city to kind of step back and look at these different, look at your land use and look at how much water you have and whether or not you can support that type of growth. And so a big part of this project for the wa, for water element, because the city itself, we don't provide water. We don't, you know, we don't support that as a utility and a lot of other cities do, but we don't. And so we would be required to coordinate with the five water districts within the city and also the canal companies and what type of services they supply and what type of, or what type of water sources they have and what is their supply limitations. And so that's gonna be gonna, that, that's probably gonna be the bulk of the plan is us coordinating with them and then tying our land use map to our, to water usage. Which the firm that we have hired to do our general plan, landmark design, has, has done this type of work before and has experience doing a water element, so. I think it won't be too bad. The other thing that I will, that I've recommended that we do as part of this is create a planting guide and landscape guide that's available for commercial and residential use. Essentially, we go through our code, what's required and create a guide that helps property owners know the best and most efficient ways or recommendations on some of the best and more efficient ways in our area to plant their yards for water efficiency or for commercial development, how to, how to interact with our land use code or in our landscaping code in a way that helps serve water.
But aren't those landscaping things that you just talked about all available currently through Weber Basin?
Yeah, there's a lot of it. That's already through Weber Basin. Our code is a little bit different than, because Weber Basin has some general planting recommendations. This one will be tailored directly to West Haven and our current standards. And so there will be a little bit of overlap between the two documents, but there will be some differences.
I mean, in terms of, of landscaping for water conservation measures, Weber Basin already does that.
Yes.
They can enforce it there. So, so how about if we say, okay, state, we're doing this magnificent job with our water plan. We're gonna require every land use application, subdivision, house bill or whatever to go through this training. They offer the training, Weber Basin. We'll just put that as a requirement. You gotta go get trained on appropriate landscaping at Weber Basin Water Conservancy as part of your application for your building permit or part of your application for your, for your subdivision. You know, that, that's an extreme thing, but my point being is the state's imposing a bunch of requirements on the city. And most of that, you know, we don't have all that much control over. And so why are we not rolling that downhill to the boots on the ground, so to speak? And I would argue that that's, that's what we should be doing rather than paying somebody to put this all together and, and again, you know, facilitating all this stuff at the city level.
Is that, would the issue with that be that, that we have to do it for every parcel in the city, whether or not it has an application for a development on it or not?
Yeah, so we do have to, for the general plan element, we do have to review current uses versus your uses and how that affects our overall water supply. And part of that too, the code, state code specifically states, we have to also measure how our water use impacts the Great Salt Lake as well. And so we have to take our current water usage in the city versus potential water usage and how our water supply, how that will impact water supply in the area.
I, I guess to me, I guess I'm a little frustrated with the requirements the state's living on the city in terms, we know how to save this water for the Great Salt Lake. Well, we can do that. We just won't issue any building permits. You know? That's not the answer.
Yeah.
But it, but it's very much like.
It is.
Modern income housing. Here's all these things you must do to allow opportunity for modern income housing. And we're gonna make you write a report and defend the report, maybe even revise and rewrite that report if we don't like it. But you can't mandate modern income housing.
Correct.
It makes, it makes no sense. But we're accepting that burden as the city. I think we need to start pushing back on that.
Yeah, and I would say the city as an individual entity probably hasn't done much pushback, but we have participated in the league, which has pushed back on quite a bit of those regulations and. regulations. And a lot of times these requirements come out as compromised legislation where the original might have been worse. And so I I don't necessarily disagree that there are some of this that is out of our control.
I get that, but whatever we can roll down to the end user instead of putting it on the rest of the community, I think we need to do. And I think not only with the water usage element of the general plan, but every other requirement the state wants to roll down on the cities and we assume the responsibility for that and none of the authority to manage. And so I mean, with that, that completes my conversation.
No, I honestly, I agree with you, George. I think it is something that this the state in in a perfect world, yeah, it'd be easy to just have the cities do all of this, but how many other cities deal with five water districts?
Yeah, not many.
I mean, honestly, like we're in a unique situation where we're we're getting water from five different sources that we have to coordinate with on every single thing, depending on what parcel, where it's at in the city, what water district it falls under, that type of thing, you know, some water districts that are culinary and secondary or two different water districts, or they're the same water district, or it's, yeah, it's it's a burden that the city is going to have to bear. Because some state legislatures think that it's an easy button.
Yeah, I don't know if I have much more to add to that, but I agree. I I agree. We are kind of a unique circumstance. So add some complexity to how we address the requirements.
Along those lines, I don't know if anybody saw on the planning commission, Weber County Planning Commission last night, it was on the agenda last night with them. The new second visit, second, second biggest city in Weber County is being proposed down 12th Street in Warren. Forty thousand people is what they're projecting it to be like a what's Saratoga? What is the little?
Oh, yeah. Eagle Mountain, Saratoga Springs.
Kind of like its own big community. And they came with their big presentation last night. My son attended and kind of reported back. And the biggest issue that they had against it, they tabled it till June. But water, because they said there's they're not building any more reservoirs. So we're not getting more water and to bring in a city bigger than Riverdale in Western Weber County without more water resources, it would be put a big burden on the existing residents. So I think it's it's a big topic of discussion where we're not getting more water. And so I think that's a logical concern. So fix it, Stephen. No pressure.
Yeah.
But I think that's true. If we keep putting pressure and kind of being aware of, you know, I think we all look back and wish there was a little bit of more pre-planning for the growth.
Yeah.
That's coming. So I think if we keep that in mind. So. But yeah, I think that's a lot of good points were addressed. So.
Yeah. So they just couple of the other elements, maybe to touch on a little bit, our land use element is probably our number one priority, which everything else will kind of fall out of. Our general plan map is, you know, I think the general impression is it needs some review and I would agree with that. And so that will be our big, that's that will be one of our biggest priorities is really trying to tackle that. And then after that, our transportation element and updating the transportation master plan. That will look one of the thing, we applied for a grant to do some of that research and study. We want to look at our current roadway and transportation system, any future roadways that might need to take place and the type of infrastructure we want to provide within our roadway. So that would include like, you know, how many lanes of track, you know, how many lanes do we want to provide? And do we want to provide bike lanes, other shared use paths, park shops, those type of things and come up with a really, I want to update our cross sections out of the end of this too. Because right now our cross sections are still a little dated and maybe not reflect some of the current concerns from residents about transportation within the city. And so there's a few things that we want to do there. So there's a bunch. And then kind of the next couple of things is we want to look at parks and open space and annexation policy plan. And then also drill down on some economic plans and area plans for certain areas within town as well. But if we can get the first three knocked off, I would be fairly happy. And then we can kind of work on the rest as time goes on. So a couple of the challenges are there are a couple of the opportunities that we have in front of us is really just budget and grant potential. One of the first things I did when I got here is I put in for a grant through UDOT and Los Angeles Front Regional Council because they have a grant that goes out every year that supports transportation and land use planning. And so I applied for a hundred thousand where we'd only have a, it's like a six point seven percent match is the minimum required. And we'll know here in a couple of weeks whether or not we'll get that grant. So essentially what the city council's direction to me was we they want to move forward with as much as we can, but if we get the grant, then we don't want to lose out on that opportunity for state funds to help help us do some local plan, local planning. If we do not get the grant, then we'll pro and that grant will help us not only do our land use element, but it will also help us do a more robust transportation element than maybe what we could otherwise afford at the moment. If we don't end up getting the grant, we will just proceed forward with the normal general plan process that we were planning to undertake anyways. And we do have some money budgeted this year to start on some of those processes as well.
You know, there were a couple of us that were on the citizens groups when they were getting citizen input on the general plan. And, you know, I'm sure everybody heard different things, but one of the things that I heard pretty strongly was people really want us to take a good look at the general plan map. And there's, there's still a lot of folks in our community who remember when when the city was developed, that everything was going to be acre lots. And I think people recognize that that's not the where it is right now. But I what I heard is people want us to look at at areas that are still open and plan for appropriate commercial zones, just like we did this evening. But look at everything else and see if it's not still rated for or zoned or planned for acre lots, why is it planned for something different? And is there a good reason? Or are there areas that we ought to go back to what the initial plans were when this city was first established? It's it's not really that old of a city.
Yeah. That's a really good point. And that's actually, I have about a hundred pages worth of public comment from the initial process. And the general plan map was brought up several times within that document, those pages. And so I do agree there's there's been a lot of concern about kind of that overall change of character and change of what vision that the city has for itself. And so I I agree. That's I think our land use element and our overall visioning is going to become very important as we go through this process.
Do we have our own like GeoGizmo account?
We have
Our Ezreal account.
One that staff uses. Some of it isn't, we're working on actually making elements of it public. We want to make our zoning map, our future land use map, transportation plans available to the public through GIS web map, like GeoGizmo. But there's some aspects on it that shows like utility lines and other infrastructure that we can't release public, partly due to security reasons.
Yeah.
But no.
No, I mean, that's where I was going with it. Those it would be a good resource for people to because, you know, we have that PDF paper copy or whatever it is. And sometimes it's hard for people to really focus in on a zone here and there, but or a a property here and there. But if we could overlay that on that GeoGizmo map or some sort of a GIS system, then it would make it a lot easier for people to search and see. And we could add more details to than just a hey, this is C two, but maybe Y or what it was. I don't know.
Yeah.
There are different things that we could tie to with the county and so on, but.
Yeah, one thing I would like to do, and this goes back to our zoning map is our zoning map has, we saw tonight, has some errors in it. We're we're about ready to bring a fully updated map to the planning commission for your review and adoption to reflect all the zoning that we have it as today. And what we want to do is take that map and put it into a GIS map that will be available to the public. And some of the tools that we that we could potentially even do with that is that when a zoning is when a zone is changed, you can tie the actual ordinance into that layer. As if you click on your property, you can see exactly when that ordinance change, you know, when the property changed and you can have a lot of those background details. And then you can also do the same thing with like a general plan map or transportation master plan. And that's in the end, that's what I'd like to do is create a more public or create a public portal for those type of issues through a GIS map. I've talked to our company that hosts the GIS, our current GIS services. And they have, they are ramping up to get that ready. And so I'm hoping here in the next couple of months, that will be available.
I have a question, maybe not as relevant, but when we do have a zone, like we do change, say, the general general plan changes properties, is there any, like, do we have to notify the homeowner? Because this has happened on a couple of agenda items this past few months. And where they were taken off, caught off guard because it was changed without them knowing. And so they were moving forward with plans, assuming it had been, it had gone unchanged. So.
Yeah, where the plan itself, we have to have a public feedback or we have to hold a public hearing legally. But the general plan app itself, we changed designations, we don't have to provide any legal notice. For zoning, you do, like the city where the city can, the city doesn't necessarily need a rezon request for us to change somebody's zoning. But if we were to take that up ourselves, we would have to notify the property.
That makes sense because there would be notification in a public.
But technically, the general plan isn't a binding document. It's a guiding document.
Yeah, it's something to follow, but not binding. Okay, that makes sense. I think I'm trying to think what happened with the one, the Stokes property. It didn't get changed. It was on the, it was in the general plan, I think, but it got changed. Caught them off guard. So.
Yeah. And typically, I think best practice is specifically if you're going to make major changes to an area that you hold like open houses or public comment periods that are directly focused on that area where those residents are advertised to and are made aware of. So they have an opportunity. That's best practice, but not necessarily a legal requirement. For those type of individual notifications. So maybe just a couple of other things with the general plan that we're looking at. Once we do start with the general plan process, we will, we will be creating a steering committee, which my recommendation would be to council members and to planning commission members that will meet and advise on each element of our plan of the general plan process. And so before any element is fully resolved, that there is input from this body. One thing we're planning on doing, there's about four different tasks that we're going to take or four different steps to do this general plan. And each of those steps would conclude with a with guidance from the steering committee. And then after our, before the general plan is fully drafted, but when we have all the public feedback gathered and the general outline of the map and goals, we want to do a joint session with the planning commission and council to ensure that, hey, this is what we heard from the public. This is what we heard from the steering committee. Is this the direction you want ahead? And try to try to catch any concerns before you see the full, you know, hundred page document in front of you. So what I'll plan on doing is as we move forward, I'll let the planning commission, I'll keep you updated on when we're going to get started on different elements of the general plan. And I'll let you know whether or not we receive that grant because we received that grant. Their timing could be a little bit different, but if not, we'll get started as soon as possible.
And this will be, this will exceed my tenure. So I won't be here for this part, but in twenty, I came on in twenty eighteen and it was, I think, the summer of twenty, end of summer of twenty eighteen, when we did a big general plan, was it twenty twenty? Remember, and it was really, I mean, I felt like it was well attended, well received. We had it over two nights, but they had like a UDOT corner. They had like different departments. And I thought it was really good for the for the community to be able to come and see and have total transparency of all the different things that feed into the general plan and why, you know, our city, how we can grow responsibly. And so I thought it was well received, just having instead of just the general plan, in addition, if we did have an open house, you know, have UDOT because it kind of fits into the general plan and have people be able to ask questions about future arterials and things. And there's still some question of how there's a couple, you know, that are kind of on our map and how are they going to work? And so I think that might even get more input from people coming out that have more concerns over transportation too, as well as the general plan and how it all fits together.
No, I definitely agree, particularly if we get that funding to do the full blown transportation master plan. UDOT and other transportation elements will be highly involved and we'll be able to broaden our strokes a little bit as we go through the planning process. Where if we don't get it, we'll probably have to look at a more phased approach, getting everything adopted.
That'll be good. Thank you for your effort. That looked, it was really good. I wish I could have listened. Was what was the feedback from the council? Were they just?
Generally speaking, they were excited about the process and it was hard because it wasn't like they made a motion. So some of it was kind of reading the room a little bit, but generally speaking, they're excited about the process. I believe council member Swap said he was giddy about it. So that's it's not bad to hear. And they felt like we should try to proceed as much as possible, wanted us to hold off on doing anything major until we knew the status of the grant. And then if we got the grant, to figure out how we can get working on it as soon as possible.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Any more discussion on that? If not, we will go to agenda item number seven.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Reina to adjourn, a second by Commissioner Gold, all in favor.
That was rude.
Was it? I was to my right.
Hi.
All right. Any oppose? I just hear a manly voice going this way and I know it's not Melinda. So.
There is that possibility.
Although the last couple of weeks, mine was pretty mad. Okay, did we finish that motion? All in favor, everyone was in favor. Okay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.